Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the October 28, 2024 Neighborhood Commission Meeting Order. I'd like to start out by calling our row. Dylan, can you please call?
Yes, Bernal.
Here.
Ching. Clark. Logue. Melendres.
President.
Oshiro.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Salamod. Veray.
Here.
We have four and with six present chair.
Thank you. I'd like to start by going over the rules of speaking. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise his or her hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments with the chair. Speakers are to keep their comments under two minutes. Public testimony can be made on each agenda item. So also, please silence all electronic devices. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public concerns. Do you have any public concerns tonight? I see two hands, so I'd like to recognize the first one that's here. Sarah.
You need to speak.
Hello, my name is Sarah Worth, and I wanted to ask you about Dylan number one. Yeah, two Dylans for meeting with me. And we actually had a great conversation in chat. And when I make this mistake, I apologize. So Lloyd, I would like to apologize. You're right. It was a bad idea sending out that white student. I forget, a lot of people don't speak legalese. And so I actually offered that Greg and I could work on getting a basically a template of something just like the minimum, the minimum standard, and also fix the boilerplate language at the front and top and bottom, and then present it to you, see if you want to do the chairs and that might help with transitions. I kind of opened that. I want to make amends.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Yeah, and then I think that, sorry, I was, no, I'm supposed to address the chair. But I just wanted to say that. And so.
Thank you.
Second hand, I see on the screen is Kevin Lai. Kevin, you have the floor.
Chair, thank you. Just a few quick comments. I question the utility to the public of the written records, which merely restate a question rather than capturing the response, if any. It's within reason to presume that a majority of readers will not, in fact, undertake the struggle to locate the related video, jog to the specified timestamp, and await with bated breath the phrase or response that answers the question that was posed. And this applies to records both of the commission and of the boards. Secondly, when will direct URLs to the actual hard-end PDF versions of the written records and meeting agenda documents be returned to the emailed meeting announcements across both of the commission and the neighborhood boards? Despite attestations made during recent committee meeting, there is a qualitative difference since these emails have been delivered by the Office of the City Clerk through their webmaster at hollou.gov address compared to those sent now, which appear to arrive from no hyphen reply at hollou.gov. There can be a grand difference between what shows up in HTML versus what is actually archived. And so I think the process needs to be made more transparent. I wonder if there is a summary of the outcome of the recent special meeting that can be made available before publication of the written record for such, if that's worthy of comment tonight. Are there any updates to viable and practical interpretations of that recent OIP suggestions that were sent out regarding the amount of detail required on meeting agendas? I don't see it specifically on tonight's agenda, so now it's open if any of the commissioners want to speak on that, I suppose. Finally, I'll ask it for the description and the Google Drive URL that ends in uU0, as presented within the emailed version of the meeting agenda has been tested. It appears to point to a folder on the Google Drive with three subfolders. Within the 2024 subfolder thereof, there's a single subfolder 10-2024, which contains information relevant to a commission meeting different from this one and is not date specific. At the time of the composition of these remarks, there is no presentation of the language within the resolution noted to be discussed through the meeting agenda this evening.
Thank you.
I was hoping to find that.
Thank you.
Certainly. Again, within that Google Drive that's posted, where and how could the public locate information apropos any neighborhood commission activity for prior months? Or is this intended to be a month-specific Google folder? If so, that should be indicated within the distributed meeting agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I see another hand.
Sorry.
I have Greg Desakian.
I'm sorry, did you call me Chair Jermaine Myers?
I called Greg Desakian. I couldn't see your name on the screen, so I see it flash on second ago. So I'll call you.
I think Jermaine was prior to me, Chair. If you want to let Jermaine go first.
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I'll be brief. Yeah, just to go back to what Mr. Lai was saying regarding the Google shared drive. I have the same concerns. It's very difficult to navigate. When you click on the link from the meeting agenda and then you go to the the Google shared drive, navigating where things are is very difficult. I'm a tech person, a techie by trade. I have an engineering background and I go through that and I have concerns with excuse me, just silencing my phone. I have concerns with navigating it, finding things. And to that concern, when I was looking for, I know we're going to get to that later, so I'm not going to get into any discussion on it. But when I did look for the resolution that is on agenda for new business, I did not see that resolution until I called earlier and it wasn't there. And I didn't think it would be there. But, you know, there it is. Shows up right before the meeting. I'm not sure what time. So that is a concern. That's actually a sunshine law concern. And that's what the resolution is all about. So we'll get to that when we get to it. And lastly, I do see some other complaints that are filed, and I'm not going to go into that with you now. We'll have a deep dive on that at some point. But I share concerns of retaliation against me, harassment for raising concerns, just bringing concerns to the board's attention, the NCO's attention, and the commissioner's attention. And repeatedly, I'm getting, it seems like attacked in the public and even where I live at my condo association as well. And with that, and I do thank you for the opportunity to make some comments.
Thank you. Jermaine Myers, your hand was up. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Jermaine Myers. I'm a Nonakuli Miley Neighborhood Board member since 2017. I've been watching some of the NCO meetings lately. And what I want to say to the different issues that come up, it's really important that you have a really great chair on each board. Of course, the members vote on the chair. But when you have a chair that makes an effort to collaborate and to encourage teamwork amongst the members, such as Chair Veray from Pearl City, he's a long timer. And when I attended his meetings, his meetings go very smoothly and all the members feel heard and they feel seen because just like how he treated me when I attended. He's very, he's very great with people. It makes such a big difference when it's a chair is a collaborative person. But here's the other thing, too. On the neighborhood board, as members, even when you don't have a chair that's a great chair, you have to consider the fact that we're there to serve the community. So when I hear things like, oh, I'm concerned about the minutes. I can't see the minutes. The minutes is not good. Well, then you have officers. Then if your board feels that you want written detailed minutes, then I highly suggest you use the officer as a secretary to go ahead and do those extra minutes. NCO does so much for us. And since I've been on since 2017, Lloyd has been an exceptional executive secretary. He doesn't discourage you from coming and complaining. What he is encouraging you to do is consider who you're serving, consider collaborating, consider compromising. I mean, many a times when I come to the NCO meeting and I'm listening to other board members speak, I feel like I'm watching, you know, children play in a sandbox, just to be frank, not acting like adults. I mean, we need to set the example for the community that we're unified and not divided. Okay, I'll summarize. So again, we need to, I think the theme for every board should be decorum and order. And that's what should be a board member's theme in their mind. I must maintain decorum and order when I come and sit at the table. Because I need the community to know that it's not my personal agenda that's most important, but hearing them and their concerns. And so later on, I'll speak about how I feel about sunshine law. But thank you, Chair, for my, this opportunity. Mahalo.
I see two other hands, but I'm going to call the person that I saw the name flash on the screen. So Natalie. What's up?
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm sorry I missed the intro. Is this the time to give testimony on the resolution for the sunshine law?
No, we're on public concerns right now.
Okay, well, then I will echo some of the concerns that were brought up with respect to the Google Drive folder. I specifically went there to look for the resolution for the sunshine law and it wasn't there. So I'm pretty familiar with the way city works with respect to that type of issue. And I just encourage you to take a look at that and make sure that those types of documents are available to the public prior to the meeting. Thank you. And I will testify on the resolution when that comes up.
Thank you. Say another hand. Okay, I see the name now. Donald Sakamoto, you have the floor.
Yeah, good evening, Chair. Donald Sakamoto from County Neighborhood Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just want to let you folks know that, Chair, that I'm a legally blind person on the board. I'm at large a treasurer. And I get hard time with the Google Drive also because of the screen, just to navigate as a blind individual. Regarding the minutes, I'm the treasurer, but I do record our minutes for County Neighborhood Board. Whoever talked, you know, like the board members, whatever. So there's a timestamp. We talk, I keep accurate minute, even though I'm the treasurer, I do that for my board. So we have documentation who spoke and we can be viewed on the video. Regarding the concern about meetings, I get sometimes I have a hard time with slide presentations. So I try to do my best to outreach to my board member, Chair Rittmore Racky, as well as Spencer Johnson, wonderful guy from your Neighborhood Board Commission that helps us set the board minutes. But thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw just another hand go off. Christian. Me, Roberto.
Take a veto. Thank you, Chair.
Your name, Ms. Porraso, for the rest of us. Can you please state your name and your affiliation? I see you're Chair.
Yes, sir. Chair of the Kahala Yalai Neighborhood Board. Last name is Decadero, but feel free to put, everybody does, so no worries on that. We've been experimenting with a couple on our neighborhood board. And I've actually found a program which has begun to transcribe, create summaries, create action items, and increase the accessibility for any individual facing accessibility issues. We've had so far a great success with these programs. We're more than happy to share them with anybody who wishes to cost like eight bucks a month. It's very simple. But we've been working with technology-based solutions and we found it to be working very well so far. So I just wanted to input that in there.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands under public concern. So we're going to move on with next agenda item, which is the approval of our September 23 thirty minutes. Has everybody had a chance?
Yes.
You have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion to, is there a seconded by clear? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes. Any objections? objections? If not, thank you very much. The news has been accepted as circulating. The next item is Executive Secretaries Report. Lloyd, if you could, I know there were a lot of concerns raised and some, you know, many of them talked about the Google Drive itself. If anything you are doing can address for what you've heard, that may be helpful to folks tonight.
Yeah, Chair. I don't have anything in response to that other than we'll take a look at it. You know, I mean, the objective for us is always get better and better. And, you know, the previous, you know, a year ago, we had no Google Drive and everything was handed out by mail. So, you know, I think we've come a long way. It's just a question of, you know, how much better we get, how much better we can get, how fast we can get. I'm very interested in the AI that the other gentleman spoke about. We've been looking for a long time. We tried it already one time and it was, it was okay. But it just didn't fit for Lloyd, you know. But yeah, but we will look into that, into the Google Drive and see if we can improve that.
Okay.
You know, I just wanted to bring up at this point because it's on the agenda that the NCO, the Commission Office survey to all neighborhood board members. And I realize that the Commission is doing its own survey to the board members. But we're looking at it from a standpoint of how we can improve our work, but also understanding the board members and what they know and what they are familiar with. And I think it was brought up earlier that, you know, people don't quite know sunshine law. They don't, they have an idea, but they don't know. Roberts rules, the neighborhood plan. So with our survey that we're going to do is straight to the board members. I want to know what everyone knows, what they don't know, where possibly we can help them. But it also is how we can work with them in terms of getting more efficient meetings. And I think the challenge, you know, the challenge, I think, not to make fun of it, but I think I'm guilty of that, too, because sometimes I think it's everybody else's problem. Everybody else is not up to speed. And the truth is, I may not be up to speed. So we're just trying to find out from our perspective, where the boards are and the board members are in terms of what they know, what they don't know, whether they might need help. It also is interesting for us. I want to survey the board members to understand what their perception is of the public. Because we are doing a survey with the public to get a perception of the board members, the boards itself and the system. So I think it'll be trying to mesh the two in terms of trying to improve. And if we're going to improve, we need to know where we need to improve. So basically, I will do, and I respect Commissioner Melendres and his survey, but ours is very targeted, very specific to the board members themselves and how we can help the board members. Just, I just want to inform you that it's something that we will be doing.
Well, thanks. But is there any time?
Well, I, you know, we haven't, unfortunately, we haven't had time to put it together. We have the questions, pretty much. It's just a question of refining all of those questions, seeing if that's everything we want to cover, and then finding a vehicle to send it out to all the, all the members. I hope, I hope 30 days we can get it out. Dylan is not happy that I said 30 days, but
Yes. Mahalo. You have a question for Lloyd?
So would this be the development of another NCO survey, other than the draft survey that you submitted to us?
Yeah, it will take what we submitted. And then we will use that as the basis of our survey. Yeah, so basically, we're going to end up with two surveys, one for the public.
Right.
And another one for board members.
Okay, okay. May I comment on his draft? Okay, I just want to comment that as back a few months ago, when, when you submitted, the NCO submitted their draft survey to us, I thought it was very, it was very comprehensive. And these are some of the things that I noticed about it, that your survey, because you are the administrative agency for the commission and how everything works, you folks work closely with the neighborhood boards on a daily basis, whereas the commissioners, we don't. I wanted to point out that your draft survey, I noticed that it touched on areas that needed to be examined and evaluated, i.e. sub-districts, demographics, district boundaries, the NHB's ability to make recommendations to the city on identifying problems, solving problems, how to increase public participation through community outreach, knowledge of the neighborhood plan, Roberts rules, sunshine laws and duties. And I also took notice that your draft survey questions pertain to the needs and the wants of the NHBs to improve their overall, the overall function and effectiveness of the neighborhood board system. And as they, the neighborhood boards represent their respective communities. So I just wanted to comment that I appreciated the NCO draft that you folks did submit and that we were able to read. And I would like us to take into consideration that draft as well, along with the draft that Commissioner Melendres put together, which I noticed some of those questions were similar to the 2014, 2015 draft. So I think compiling it all together, along with the 110 questions that we have yet to take a look at and comments, I think that would create a very good and comprehensive survey. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for Lloyd? If not, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is new business. And under new business, we have a resolution requesting that the White State Legislature remove sunshine law requirements for neighborhood boards. So it's on the agenda for tonight. Maybe I can turn it over to Patrick, certainly, kind of start us off on the discussion on this resolution.
Thank you. If I might quickly address the issue of it not being available online earlier. It was not, it was not available to really any, anybody until right before the meeting. And I would suggest that without going into the details of the sunshine law, and I can, if so required, that there's a simple test to determine whether the board can take action on an item. And that is like a neighbor test. So if you ask your neighbor, what can, you know, if they read an item on the agenda and it's logical, something would follow, then it's okay. The agenda clearly states that we're considering a resolution, like I termed it exempt, but it's the same thing, remove the neighborhood boards from the auspices of the sunshine law. So that's what this resolution does. It's pretty simple. There are a lot of wherashes. But if I can just, and I can go through it, but basically, it just says finally resolved the, the commission requests the state legislature exempt neighborhood boards from the sunshine law. So it's pretty clear. That's, that's, that's the whole, that's the meat of the resolution. There are a lot of wherashes. I think it would have probably been a best practice to make it available early, earlier. It just was not. As everybody knows, with the OIP opinions that had a significant impact and created some stress on a lot of boards that read the material. That's why this was a little bit rushed and not produced in time. And I apologize for that. But I do think that we are within the law considering this. And with that said, I could read it or yes, if you would, please.
I don't think Patrick, you need to read it.
Okay, because like
And then you mentioned the the resolve, the resolve process. So basically, that's the submission.
Yeah, and I actually this was sort of a work in progress. So when it says request the state legislator, legislature work to exempt, I would just strike the work to and just put, and just go straight to the state legislature exempt the neighborhood boards. So this is it right here. But if I could go into the reasoning behind it and just talk a little bit more about why this is important. The meat of the sunshine law, in other words, the, the actual requirements to maybe prevent intermember conversations outside of meetings, putting things on, you know, adequately stating things on the agenda. I don't, I can't speak for the other commissioners, but I do think that that's very important. So a lot of the requirements of the sunshine laws are very important. What the problem becomes is when you require another agency, say like OIP, to make the interpretations of the sunshine law, it becomes very difficult because then the boards, the commission can't go behind them and say, well, this is what it really means in your circumstances. And so what I am suggesting is that the legislature, because of the nature of the boards, and I can talk a little bit about that, too, should allow the commission to police those type of requirements and thereby, you know, allow the plan to cover that. So when a board comes in and says, hey, what should our agenda look like? Is this agenda item sufficient? The commission itself can say yes or no. Right now, we can't because it's an interpretation of sunshine laws. So that's the problem. And I would suggest, if you read the, just to circle back, if you read the sunshine law, seemingly the only way it seems that the neighborhood boards are captured is our advisory capacity. But because we don't have, the boards don't have powers, any other powers. But if you look at the grand majority, if you count the neighborhood boards as a single entity, if you look at the grand majority of the boards, they advise about very specific subject areas, be that, you know, waterway, be that, you know, the roads or whatever it is. Whereas the boards are broad-based. I mean, we supposedly cover anything, anything, be it state, local, or federal issues that might be involved in our, in the local community by definition. So it's not really advisory in the nature. I would have, I would think that the, the act was originally intended. So I think pulling this out, you know, of, of the coverage of the sunshine law is the appropriate thing to do. I think we can keep the spirit of the sunshine law in the commission when we cover the boards. But we don't need, that gives us the flexibility, I'm sorry, the flexibility to go in and make rules and interpret those rules and help the, the boards operate the way they need to operate. And right now, if you look at a lot of the specifics of the recent OIP decision, it actually takes away from the ability of board members, who are the people in the community that people call to make their issues known. It takes away their ability to bring subjects up. It requires a member of the public to do that. And so in a lot of ways, you're disincentivizing people to join the board. It's easier for them to quit the board and then go to a meeting and raise an issue where they can and board members can. And it's, it's a non, for that reason, it's a nonsensical, and I won't just say application, but it's a nonsensical imposition of the law on the real functionality of the board, what the board should be. With that said, I can stop talking and someone else can take up anything else.
Questions for Thomas from the official members?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that, you know, after Lloyd, you said the correspondence from OIP, it definitely opened the eyes of my board and it gave the perception that there were Muslims, going to be Muslims. And the other thing is, is being the chair, it was going to be very difficult to beat OIP's guidance on how to put the agenda together because I have no clue what the officials are going to talk about. And normally, I don't, I don't find out about the report to the day of my meeting early that day. But the other thing is, there were so many important things that come up during the Honolulu Fire Department, the Police Department, and even though that they don't, they give their normal reports, and granted, we added verbiage into the agenda to cover what OIP had requested. My board members cannot sit there silent when there's been a murder or there's been some other type of homeless situation or whatever, and they need to engage the Police Department then, because we can't wait till the next month's meeting to do it. So I just want to say, I think the timing right now and thanking the commission for putting this forward to take action, because we need to stand up for all our boards and all those board members that make a big difference every day with their creative ideas to pay present for officials.
Anybody else in the mission? So Kevin, can you take us back to the screen so I can see the folks that wanted to say something in this panel? So I see Sarah, your handle's up.
Sarah Worth.
Oh, sorry. Sarah Worth, uh bunch of team neighbor board, but speaking uh for myself. That's actually one of the things I brought up uh earlier that you concerns is that, you know, I think people are overreacting a little bit because it wasn't that opinion. They give you best practices, you know, medium and then like minimal practices. And they did give us ways of kind of uh using some general language to be a catchall. Uh so for example, even in the same states that we'd be able to talk about speeding, but that's actually one of the things the report actually lists is speeding or murder. That actually is listed in the police report. So that would be on the agenda in a sense of that would, as Patrick said, you know, the neighbor test. It would make sense that if it's on the agenda, we could report some murders that we could talk about recent murder. So and and that's one of the reasons I wanted to work with O I P to see if we could find a happy meeting. And the reason why all these issues are coming up right now is because our board, I'm sorry, guys, is having a lot of unfortunate issues about um the agenda and intentionally making it vague or we have issues. So the sunshine law, I do believe it does protect us and hopefully uh we don't need to completely get rid of it, although I hundred percent understand the concerns. And um actually, I use Larry as an example all the time when uh you know concern section, when someone brings something up that is completely outside the agenda, we actually will assign it to a committee. So that person then like they can be heard, they can find a resolution and then uh put it on the agenda for next time. But I do understand the concerns. Hopefully, and certainly, and hopefully, they can find a resolution uh working with O I P. So.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I see some hands up on the screen. So first of all, the first and the fourth people that we haven't heard from before. So I see name up their, Colin Fujiki. You have the floor.
Yeah, my name is Colin Fujiki. Uh I'm a neighborhood board member on the Y Lai Kahala Neighborhood Board. Um and yeah, I just want to submit testimony on on the sunshine laws. I think, you know, following the letter of the O I P is 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 a pretty hindering and just really like I think doesn't follow the intent of what the neighborhood board meetings are for is just having active engagement within the community and being able to have those impromptu discussions is is I think, you know, is um necessary to to maintain that active, you know, community. Uh like I said, like some of you guys said, like uh another month down the line is is a long time to wait, especially to expect uh the residents to continue to show up for months on end to kind of continually a discussion based on how that is affected in the agenda. Um but yeah, so I I'm, you know, in support of the the resolution to remove the sunshine law from the neighborhood boards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um Natalie Iwasa, I know you started earlier, so we can continue your testimony on this.
Thank you, Natalie Iwasa, for the record. I oppose this resolution and I wish it had been posted sooner. I would have read it. Um I'm concerned that apparently my written testimony wasn't provided to commissioners and so um that's why I'm here presenting remotely. Um you know, I can understand why board members are um concerned about the O I P letter that was written. I think that's what is in the resolution. Um but you know, I've tended a lot of neighborhood board meetings and the items that come up from third parties are for reporting are pretty consistent and the the O I P gave examples of how to handle those items in that letter. I think those are good examples. I think they are not onerous. I think they are, you know, can be incorporated. And we don't need to repeal the sunshine law with respect to neighborhood boards. The sunshine law is there for the public to know what is going to be discussed so that they don't miss something important. It's just too valuable, in my opinion, to remove. And I also wanted to um point out, in case you weren't aware, that the, I think it's called Public First Center for Law. They specialize in the sunshine law and they were quoted in that civil beat article from Friday stating that there's really no need for neighborhood boards to be exempted. So you you know, that would be a resource for neighborhood boards as well. They do take questions from the public on sunshine law matters. So if there were something that needed to be clarified examples, I think that they would be very responsive. They've always responded to my requests. So um I ask you not to pass this because in my opinion, as I said, it's just too valuable for the public. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
All right, thank you. Uh the next person up. Adrian Lamb, you have the, you have the floor.
Hi, thanks. Um yeah, I'm speaking in support of the resolution. Um when I first heard about this thing about sunshine law. You know, the neighborhood board is an advisory board. We're not a decision making body. I I get it when the sunshine law wants to make sure that when decisions with real fiscal impact or uh you know, decisions are made that it's properly recorded, but you know, the neighborhood board is our our closest access to the public. And we're taking information and taking in, you know, giving people the freedom to speak about things and consider things. So if you put this kind of agenda driven um meetings, uh we don't have that free access to people. It's almost suppressing the speech of the people and being able to get on on the board to talk about things. So I am supportive of the resolution. Um I think it should be, I agree, it should be discretion in every commission office to uh allow for the boards to um get to a point. I, you know, at some point, yeah, maybe if we are a decision making body, we have fiscal decisions or fiscal impact. And we do have responsibilities within the community. Yes. Raise the standards. We're not there yet. So uh thanks for offering to speak. Oh, yeah, I'm Neighborhood Board Thirty Vice Chair, Cunningham. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh next up, uh Greg Saikin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Um first comment I'll make is regarding uh Miss Iwasa, if I pronounce her name properly with her testimony that she indicated was sent but not um provided. So I didn't see it online either. My testimony that I sent was not available when I checked this morning and I did reach out to Deputy Director Dylan Witsel and he couldn't find it. And I sent it to the correct email address, the N B testimony address that you guys have. Um so I share that concern. I resent it to him directly and it is uploaded. Um I'm concerned that he also indicated there was other testimony, so I don't know if there was more than just Miss Iwasa's, but if there was, where is it? Uh it needs to be posted. That's a very serious concern. It goes along with my concern that the resolution wasn't posted. Uh which in my opinion, and I'm not an attorney and I believe Mr. Smith is, but and I don't, I don't think he's acting as an attorney here on the commission, but I believe strongly that and and from speaking to O I P that the information, the the whatever should be in the board packet or for the commissioners should be available to the public. This document should have been there because it's being discussed right now and we do have it there now, but just moments before the meeting started. I don't know how many hours or minutes. Uh I will say this, I do not support this resolution. This has been long discussed. Many other civil beat articles besides the one today that was published have discussed the sunshine law. So we can we can go to that later. I think I referenced a few of those in my testimony. Okay, what I will say is this. When we go to a meeting, we are making decisions on things in an advisory role that have impact to the actual decisions that the city and uh the city and county of Honolulu, the city council and our state legislators are making. We have direct impact on those decisions. The sunshine law was put in place for a reason. It's been there for a very long time. And any kind of um decision right now to remove that from the boards i- in my opinion, is a serious conflict of interest if it's coming from the commission. If this is something that's organic, I I can understand and I'll stop there because my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Kevin Lai, you have the, you have the floor.
Chair, thank you. Um I'll just start by saying that the sunshine law is much more than just about meeting agendas. Secondly, I'll say that I've known it sometimes as being a bit of an iconoclast. So when I read the O I P letter of late, uh my first thought was, are these simply just tablets coming down from the mountaintop? Is there any any mean means to reconsider that opinion as it appears to be in conflict with the way many of our boards have been operating, but perhaps there's a happy medium that could that could come across. Regarding testimony, I hope that the commissioners have each read the testimony that was submitted by Miss Lynn Matasal. I think I saw that posted online last week. Hope that it's still there. And again, that echoes my concern that there's potential of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, if we do remove ourselves from the sunshine law. How would the individual boards need to handle things such as a change in location of this meeting? As as I, it appears this is in a different location than what was posted on the Neighborhood Commission Agenda for this evening. Would there be a requirement still to post signage to let members of the public know? Uh how would we control uh meetings of subgroups of board members and the provisions that are in place now that prevent collusion and things such as that? So I think this requires a bit more of a downstream analysis of what exactly would happen. And if we did or we were removed from sunshine law, what would the burden then be to add to the neighborhood plan all of the conditions that are useful and of use for protecting the public, the interests of the public? Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh Jermaine Myers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Jermaine Myers. Again, I am a board member from the Non-Aquilimali Neighborhood Board number thirty six. Um Chair, I do support the resolution. At the same time, if the resolution does not pass, I'm very familiar with sunshine law and I'll follow it. But I do have to agree with um Commissioner Verre that sometimes we need things to be discussed with governor, with mayor's rep, city council, that is not on the agenda. Um that because of if the agenda has to be specific. For example, in my neighborhood board or along the Wai'ne Coast, we've had those killings from August sixth to October sixth. In two months' time, we lost many lives. And at the neighborhood board level, we can bring up our concerns or things of that nature related to the those specific issues that happen in our community at the drop of a dime, you know, urgent things happen, fires happen, et cetera. So I don't want to be restricted and I think the Neighborhood Commission Office and the staff can do a good job of incorporating the things that I like on the sunshine law, which are guardrails, like you can't talk to each other. You have to notify uh in order to solicit a vote so that we don't have special interests, et cetera. I do, I do disagree that just because we write a resolution and we pass it on the neighborhood board that the council members will listen to it or the senators will listen to it or represent it. That's not been my experience experience since twenty seventeen. We still have to go to the city council meeting and still advocate. And at the same time, we've seen it where there's no support because just so happened the powers to be goes the other way. So I really feel that it's more important for participation and the things that Commissioner Verrea talked about, the flexibility of being able to speak. It's not gonna be all community concerns. And I think we've done it so well with participation that we need to preserve that with the agenda, not having to be so restrictive. Chair, did you tell me I was out of time?
Uh yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um next one up, I see, and David Chizuma, is that right? David, you have the floor.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay.
Identify yourself.
Yes, uh David Chizuma, uh I am on the Cunningham Neighborhood Board. Um I wanted to testify in uh opposition of the of the resolution. Um I I don't believe that it um really is needed for us to remove sunshine law, uh remove us from sunshine law. I do believe, I know that there is a concern that uh we aren't able to bring up topics as board members, but the public can bring up those issues. If it's not on the agenda, the public and it's important enough, the public can come in and and bring it up. Uh we just can't vote on the actions and I understand that. Um because if it is something that is important, um we we could put it on the agenda for the next time around and thus give everybody time to prepare for a proper response and discussion and then make a a good decision as opposed to trying to do it on the fly. Um really catching folks off guard, the board and the community um really would be a detriment and I think to the public um and the whole neighborhood board as a as a system. So I just wanted to support my um provide my uh opposition to to the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I see uh Christian, your hand is up again.
Yes, sir. Christian Jacob Vado, Kahala Wai'ne Neighborhood Board Chair. Um I'm in support of the resolution uh from a personal standpoint. I believe that there is an added need for flexibility in this new day and age. Um especially with neighborhood boards struggling to bring in younger members, um trying to keep community engagement. Um I think we can all agree that there's been a massive pullback and we've been trying to get the community more involved. I believe an important part of making their voices feel heard and making making it seem like we can do something for them, which will encourage their active participation and their appreciation of not just what the neighborhood board provides as well as the uh state government is to be able to flexibly respond, be able to bring up, be able to talk about items that haven't been brought up directly by public conversation. Um sometimes people just don't have time to attend the meetings and they'll just talk to me beforehand and say, hey, this is an issue. Please talk about it. Um so it it's my belief that pulling back would allow us added flexibility, which would encourage the public to participate more. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Jacob Winston. You have the floor. Jacob?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. Um I just want to briefly comment as a member of the public that I am more or less supportive of the resolution in front of us. I think that O I P, despite their best intentions, has really lost sight of you know, common sense and they're getting way too in the weeds on this, right? The neighborhood board's value is that it's an advisory community board that doesn't really have any legislative regulatory powers. It's there to provide a forum for members and the public at large to really communicate concerns. And I think we've lost sight of that. And the more I've sat and read um the O I P letter, the more that it just seems very condescending, paternalistic and a little untethered to reality. And while I have no um no personal qualms or quarrels with O I P, I think that we need a return to common sense. Directionally, I like where this resolution is going. I appreciate uh attending tonight and being able to hear the initial explanation and context that all this came about. So thank you to the commissioner who presented this and sort of gave some greater insight into it. I think change is needed for the sunshine law, as least as it relates to these type of community advisory boards. You know, the I'll I'll close with the public. We're not idiots. We're not stupid. No, we can read a simple agenda and understand what's going on. We don't need every little piece spelled out. We don't need to be handheld through this. So I ask that, you know, not just the commission, but our state and city government, you know, treat the public like the adults they are. And I think we'll all be the better for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the other hand, Donald Sockaboro, you have the floor. Donald?
Good evening, Chair. Uh yeah, Donald Sockamur again, County Night Board Thirty. And a and a and a large, a large member of, our last meeting was October seventeenth twenty twenty four and um there was a police report. But they did not elaborate about the high, high, high high school arrest that they had uh was in their reports. I asked the question. Then there was fifty-two speeding uh um warnings given on the H three. That was in the police report. So I asked the question, what happened with that? Uh it wasn't mentioned in front. So I think I I support this resolution, same as my counterpart Vice Chair of Adrian Lamb's comments that we need to be uh have this resolution passed so that we don't have to deal with uh which is advisory, you know, we're not voting on anything. So I support the resolution. That's my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dylan, are there any more answers? At least, no more answers. Okay, thank you. I'm returning back over to the commission to uh discuss any um next steps. Patrick, you have the answer?
Uh, yes, I if I could respond to to some concerns.
Sure.
Um, I would initially say, uh, in the article on civil being which um the gentleman from the public, and and I can't remember the term, but the Public Interest Center, whatever, said that um there were workarounds for this. However, the two that he mentioned, one would require an emergency meeting. So in other words, it would have to be a separate meeting. Now you could have, I I, so that that creates a lot of issues. The other is an imminent peril. Imminent, I think it's health, safety, can't remember the other uh area. I'm sorry, I don't have that information right in front of me, but as I recall, that requires at least on a state level, the okay by the Attorney General's Office. I don't know what the equivalent would be on the city council or the city level. But we're not talking about easy workarounds. I mean, that that's, that's the whole point is that you're not allowing the boards to function as they really should. And that is a place for citizens to get information. So let me go to a couple of other points. Uh, the sunshine law, as I read it initially, I don't believe the board should actually even be covered because I don't believe their advisory, um the advisory requirement in the law would would apply to something like the neighborhood boards, simply because our advisory opinions are no more than just public submissions, just like we had this discussion about submitting something to the uh county council. Uh, they hold no strong weight other than to just maybe designate that there are members of a community that want something, which is important, but they have no other significant weight. And so I would suggest that, uh, yeah, the sunlight sunshine law application is just, it doesn't seem to really make sense for the boards. The other thing that I would say is a lot, and I think really all the sunshine law requirements are in the plan. I mean, I'm not aware, I, you know, I I chair the committee over the neighborhood plan, and I'm not aware of any of the uh any particular parts of the plan. Now, maybe not the OIP interpretation, but all the elements of the sunshine law are incorporated into the plan. They may be a little outdated. So those wouldn't go away, and there's a process that that plan has, there's a public process by whereby that plan has to be modified. So it's not as if the commission can just with a broad stroke say, oh, we're not going to require the agendas to be as specific, you know, so this, this this just talks about putting that management of the boards in it in a board, which is the commission, that is more able to manage the requirements of something like sunshine law issues. Um, that's really it. I'm sorry. That's about all. Thank you.
Wait, anybody else?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had one last thing. I forgot. I remember. There is an issue about the public can raise issues, but as a practical matter, I know in my experience with my personal board, uh, our board members are very active in the community. A lot of people call them with concerns. They don't actually come to the meeting. So members of the other are other members of the public might not be aware, like when something comes up from a police report or a fire department report, they may not be aware of the specific issue, so that issue just wouldn't be listed. Now, I know one of the workarounds that was talked about was listing out all the areas uh that a police, say a police department could report on. Well, then you're going to just sit and have a laundry list on your agenda all the time. And that's going to be an absurdity, you know, as opposed to like car break-ins, murders, you know, robberies, things like that. I mean, are you going to list, are we really going to have our boards list all of those? And then if they're not addressed month by month, they're clearly illusory, so it just doesn't make sense is what my point is. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you very much, Chair.
The resolution besides that you're addressing the agenda of issues, it also addressed the issue, I'm sorry, I didn't read the word you have for each item you have to have a public concern. And we do all the public concerns in one place um so that we're not having to go for every, like, police department, public that public concerns, uh. I mean, we, and this happens with state board too, that one city authority and kind of tightening up the agenda and where they have to stay, well, they can't just put a general topic.
If I could address that, Chair. Uh, that would have to be addressed, and I believe uh those specifics are not addressed in the plan. Correct?
Right.
Yeah, so uh if if the commission deemed that we want public concerns to be a certain length, or we wanted them to be a certain place on the agenda, we could mandate that, assuming the public uh approves the plan or not approves the plan, but we go through that process that the plan is approved. Um, the other part is, I mean, the irony now, it seems like the commission can't really say what's on the agenda because it goes down to interpretation of the sunshine laws issue. And so the commission can't really stake out and and make an illegal interpretation to say what an agenda has to entail. Does that answer your question? Sorry.
But but this is also what's before us, is really the suggestion to the OIP. OIP will have um their own discussions and betting a very this this was issued before, they didn't even get the any change. So we're just making a suggestion.
Yeah, this is a suggestion to the legislature to actually exempt us. Now, everybody needs to realize what OP OIP's position is. OIP is not supposed to make policy in the sense, you know, that they say, oh, this is a good idea, this is a bad idea. My understanding is they're just supposed to interpret the legislation that they have before it. So we can go to OIP and say, oh, this is not a good idea. It it's not in their hands. I I mean, I don't, I don't know what their response would be, but I would imagine that they're going to say the legislation is as the legislation is and that they just interpret it. Anyway.
No, that's what actually I was going to do, that we still will have other places that have much more embedded discussions um and have more input, and then whatever is legislated, that OIP might have an easier time interpreting. Because right now, it seems a lot of the OIP interpretation we get is a middle of the road, while you can do this, or you can do that, or look at it this way, or maybe this might help thinking more clear for them. I don't know.
Well, and that's why I would suggest that you leave those type of issues to the commission that's best suited to make the type of decisions regarding the operation for the boards. I'll actually let the commission manage the boards. That would, and if you exempted the the neighborhood boards, that would allow the commissions to do that. And uh just so everybody realizes, and I hope I made this clear at the first part, we're not, this proposal does not exempt the commission or is not asking to exempt the commission from the sunshine law. The commission under this would still, the sunshine law would still apply to the commission.
This is just for me.
This is purely just for the neighborhood boards, and this is just a request. We have no authority. We're like a neighborhood board asking the county council to do something. We have no authority, but this allows us to speak as a one voice to say this is what we believe to be the best policy.
Okay, Mr. White taking action on this tonight? We have a motion or a note? I thought, Larry?
I'd like to make a recommendation that we continue to put some creative language into the resolution and move this to the next meeting because since we didn't get it posted, I don't think we can vote on it in any way. Is that correct?
Is there a second?
Get to the next meeting.
There's no, no second.
There, there's a second? You need a second?
Is there a second?
I, okay.
Okay, discussion.
Yes.
Patrick?
Uh, I'm sorry, Stephen, if I could just say real quick, um, I'm not in opposition to tabling this. However, I do believe that we have the authority pretty clearly, and I can go through that. I think I I I brushed over it when we talked about it not being available. But if it is the will of the commission to table this, I I certainly have no objection.
Stephen, your hand is up, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Larry that we should table this. I don't believe there is enough notice to review it. I have not had enough notice to view the resolution either. I did review the letter from OIP though, and it does appear to be overstep. So that's where we're at. Um, I I agree with Commissioner Larry to go ahead and table this to next uh commission meeting, but also I would like to have a an opinion from the uh boards themselves. What do they think? Have they actually, uh, Patrick, have they actually been sent the resolution?
Yes. Not a resolution.
No, this is, this, this resolution is just before the commission at this time. And one thing about the neighborhood boards, the big commission, for example, what they action on this uh resolution, either way, I mean, individual boards can, for whichever way they want, if they wanted to uh weigh in on any proposal at the legislature, so you know, they could go either way, so nobody's stopping neighborhood boards from chiming in on any issue, especially one like this.
Yeah, I just don't think they've had a chance to respond.
But it happened.
I guess I'm sorry, I guess they they can, from what I'm understanding, you're saying, if they wanted to respond, they can respond at the legislative level.
What? If it goes to the legislature, they can come in and maybe even measure either way, however they feel. Um, I mean, if the commission were to say that passes, if we not have a position on it, then we still have a measure at the legislature, you can still weigh in on it either way, so you know.
So I guess what I'm
Yeah, this, this has not actually do anything except, you know, urge the legislature to consider. I mean, even without the resolution, if anybody wanted to do it, they could.
Yeah, so that's why I, you know, I I'm not against tabling it, Larry, but I'm thinking what more information would we need? What what more will we find out next one? We're going to hear pretty much the same arguments, people saying that they don't, okay. All right, Larry, so.
Larry?
I just, I just want to say, you take a look at our audience that we have here tonight. Everybody's got some ideas, and I know once we get off here, Pat might be bombarded with some ideas to come in, you know, with language to go in, but I I just, we need to get this perfect. I'm total supportive of this because this, I can see this going into whoever has that great influence, one of our legislators, to go into a resolution because it's much easier to get a resolution passed and hit the bill for the purpose. And uh, and I really think that opportunity for all the boards to chime up and say, hey, this is a great thing for us, and plus the commission really take care of our boards.
Now, just for clarification, I don't believe this resolution is one that we should introduce at the legislature. If the commission or any neighborhood board um take action on it, say they support it, for example, that's it. A resolution doesn't need to go in. Like the, 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 the action is really to support legislation, so if a legislator, I think, well, then introduce a bill, for example, for example, and we're forced to put and if the board took a position on it, either way, you know, they could, they could just, just, well, be selecting position mission. Uh, Chair?
I'm sorry, Stephen, if I could add one thing, and that is, uh, um, so what the practical effect of this would be is would allow anyone, including myself, to approach a state legislator and say, hey, the commission, which over, the neighborhood commission, which oversees the neighborhood boards, ask this resolution. And then I would advocate why, for many of the reasons I spoke to tonight, they should introduce legislation to do what we asked. So anyway, thank you.
Stephen, you have more?
Yeah, closing comment, um. More I think about it, I think we should share to uh table it to next meeting. And since we're addressing it to the legislature, I have another item before the legislature now, asking them to convene a special session, waiting on that. But I think it'd be good if we had the legislature represented in our meeting, to resolution with them, especially the chair of uh of governance, to see what they would say about it. I think that's part of the absorption process and also perhaps getting more information back from the chairs of the boards. Because I always work collaboratively with with the legislature. I've done for years. So a little bit more collaboration might be a little bit easier uh to digest. I think all of us, the table, of all, had really good input to this. And Patrick, thank you very much for doing this. I think public opinion is going this route also, but I would like to work a little bit more collaboratively with the legislature.
Okay, thank you. So uh, there's a motion to table this resolution in the next meeting, so it was moved, it started it. Are there any objections? Extentions? Opposition? Here we go. Can we just move this to the next video of submission? Patrick, was there, you, you had mentioned that you're believing towards on, are you going to do that?
Yes, let me, uh, it it was sort of a little rushed towards the end, so, uh.
That the state legislature has seven neighborhood boards.
Yeah, let me resubmit this since we haven't passed it, and I will uh do that a couple of weeks before the meeting, so it'll be well, give plenty of time for people to actually read it and and form their own opinions based upon the actual written resolution.
Okay, thank you. We want to, uh, the next item on our agenda, which is committee reports, so we start with the elections committee report. For elections, thank you. Uh, survey committee, Stephen?
Uh, thank you very much. Yes, arrange for uh Dylan, I'm help me with this on confirm, confirming, believe our next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-first, the survey committee. Is that correct?
That is the date that, yeah, we put together. Um, I would recommend checking with the other survey committee members to see if that would achieve for them.
Thanks.
With their at the table, they can, they can share. That is our plan unless there's a, so let's take exception to that. That would be the plan for the next survey committee meeting.
Perfect. Thursday, the twenty-first. Thursday, November twenty-first.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone take exception to that?
Thursday, the twenty-first.
Thursday, November twenty-first.
But you, you know, you can do it virtually too, so you don't have to be at the table. That's fine.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
Sarah Melendez, yeah, we got two guesses from the room.
Thank you. The other item is that for uh Commissioner Larry, uh, we've had John Ching on the survey committee. I'd like to move to have it, have him replaced with Commissioner Larry to support the survey committee.
Do I have a second?
I would second if that's, yeah, that's a motion.
We'll, we'll take it.
Okay.
Thank you. I so move.
Thank you. Discussion?
Any discussion on that motion?
No.
Okay, any objections? Opposition?
No.
If not, uh, Larry on the survey committee is going to take off Jonathan's.
Sure, please.
Form a car, it's just a switch of.
That's right, it's replacement.
They say. Okay, you have more, Stephen?
Uh, no, we had discussed also about doing a pig. But I'm still in consideration of that, not decided that, so we'll bring that up at the survey committee.
Right.
Um, I want to talk more with the uh the members of the committee.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good. Thank you.
Maria, what do you have?
Uh, we have not discussed having a, uh, yeah, a pig with our chair. We have not discussed it.
Yeah, we'll talk about it in the next meeting. As a survey committee, but I think that, yeah, this is on tonight's agenda, but we're going to defer it. It's going to come up with the next survey committee.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, I'd like to, um, Chair Melendez, I I requested that, um, you stated on the notes, um, for the um, that Dylan sent us that you had received one hundred and ten comments and um questions for the survey. So I, um, I'd like to request again that you forward that information so that the committee members can take a look at that before the next meeting, and we could have some time to review it.
Um, thank you, Commissioner. I don't remember that number. It's been a hundred and ten, but yeah, we can compile and submit that. Thank you. But yeah, we can compile and submit that. Thank you.
I believe that was.
It was in the, it was in your, uh, the
Committee.
Committee, right, the minutes, um, the agenda that Dylan sent. So it would really help if we could receive all that information ahead of.
Yeah, I believe. Thank you. Yeah, that's fine. I think what he's referring to also with the meeting, the minute, the, uh, questions which Lloyd had put together, and it appears that Lloyd has his own survey that's going to address his questions. Our questions are different.
Actually.
We are going to have two surveys. I don't want to infringe on what the NCO office is doing, nor did Lloyd mention about infringing on the Commission's survey. So I think it's fine. Just go ahead and proceed accordingly.
Stephen, just to clarify, I think the request is that before the, uh, suggestions and recommendations that came from the neighborhood boards.
Right.
That's, the answer to that is yes.
Office.
Right, but I.
Answer to that is yes.
Um.
That's fine. Thank you.
Chair, I'm, I'd also like us to, besides the survey that, um, you put together and the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen survey, the questions seem to be very parallel. I'd like us to also consider, um, the NCO draft, uh, survey questions that they submitted to us a few months back. And with the one hundred and ten questions and comments that you received, that we take a look at the whole of that to see if we could compile a survey, um, that is comprehensive. And even though they have decided, maybe they're going to do another survey on top of that, I wouldn't want to put their, uh, NCO draft questions that they submitted to us. I wouldn't want to put that on the side because I thought their forty-four questions were very good. They were, they were in-depth and as I mentioned earlier, they work more closely with the neighborhood boards on a daily basis than we, the Commissioners do. So I'd like to consider their draft that, um, they did submit to us together with what you put together um, prior, a few months ago.
We can consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, we'll move on to the other side for you, Patrick?
Uh, well, we met and we formulated some drafts or edited some of the plan for the proposed version. And we're going to meet again next month to do the same. I forgot to, uh, provide the list of, uh, sections that we will cover. I didn't write that down now, but I'll, I'll send that out and that will be publicized. I think it'll, it'll go as a second document, a, a separate document to the Google shared drive to, to allow people to do their own edits and that sort of thing. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Patrick? Uh, Kevin Lai, I see your hand up. You have the floor.
Chair, thank you. Uh, and I appreciate the comments from, uh, Commissioner Smith. I just wanted to make sure that with the distribution to the interested parties of the specific chapters or sections to be discussed, uh, that somehow we'll get the URLs to reach the docx versions of the materials to be reviewed, uh, not just PDF versions. I think that's what's been posted. I know there was the issue with the non-governmental website. Just want to make sure there's a way that we will be able to access that and, and learn about that information before, well before the next committee meeting. Thank you.
I can respond. The, the non-governmental website is up and functioning and is actually sitting there. I just have to move it over to the Google Drive just because that's more of an official. So I do want to make an, an official repository, I suppose. And that's why it'll, it'll be new, it'll need to be moved over there, but it, it is actually sitting on that website. I'm sure it's running. I hope you don't have any problems. If you do, email me. Thank you.
See, I have your hand up. Is that Donald?
Yes.
Sockamore, you have your.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure that the, uh, as a blind individual, that the, uh, surveys are set upon. I will, I will work closely with Dylan Buck and whoever is doing the survey on that, uh, if I can try it out on my assistant technology, talking software, Josh. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no more hands, we're going to move on to announce this. The next neighborhood plan committee meeting that Patrick just mentioned will be on Monday, November eighteenth. The survey committee meeting announced by Commissioner Malendres will be on Thursday, November twenty-first, border at six p.m., right? Okay, and then the next regular meeting of the neighborhood commission is scheduled for Monday, November twenty-sixth at six p.m. Here, Papa Lama. That's the only announcements I have. Are there any further announcements?
Okay. What's your four November event, conference and chairs?
Yeah, just, um, just, um, reminder again, we, November fourth, I have a meeting with the chairs and it's not really a conference, it's just a meeting with the chairs and the vice chairs. And obviously the big topic is the OIP letter. Uh, hopefully we'll have some, what to say clarity, but at least some simple ideas on how they can go forward, you know, but looking forward to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the Commission, I'm going to next turn the sunshine portion of this meeting and we have a judicatory portion of the meeting that will follow. So, um, you could stick around for that part of the meeting and everybody else, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.